Good morning, everyone. Um, welcome to today's joint public hearing convened by the State Standing Committee on Corporations, Commissions and Commissions, Authorities, Investigations, and Operations. I am Chair Corporations, um, Leroy Comrie, New York State Senator, Fourteenth District, Queens. I'm joined by the Chair of the Investigations and Operations Committee, Senator James Scoofus, and also Senator Jessica Ramos, Chair of the Labor Committee. I want to extend thanks to our President Pro Tem and Majority Leader Andrew Stewart, Andrea Stewart-Cousins for her guidance as our leader in the Senate. This is the first public hearing of the 2024 legislative cycle for the Corporations Committee jointly working with Investigation and Operations. But I look forward to working with my colleagues to continue our commitment to making New York the best place for small businesses to thrive and grow. I represent the Fourteenth District in Queens, and I continue to work to uphold the standards of transparency, efficacy, and diligence necessary to serve our constituents throughout the state. By holding a hearing with the State Liquor Authority and relevant stakeholders, our committee will explore how the authority can be a better business partner and improve customer service, and how the legislature can further improve the A B C laws and procedures under which the State Liquor Authority operates. The committees further seek to gather information to value the extent to which the State Liquor Authority has appropriately, appropriately exercised its regulatory authority through the issuance of licenses, the imposition of fines and penalties, and its application of the enforcement provisions under the Alcohol Beverage Control Law. We are gathered here today to address the necessary changes that need to be made to the Alcohol and Beverage Control Law, hear from the agency most associated with that area of the law, the State Liquor Authority, as well as various stakeholders in the alcohol and liquor sector and the restaurant community to gather any recommendations that can assist in the functionality of the agency. The State Liquor Authority will have ten minutes to present testimony, and other oral testimony will be limited to five-minute duration. There is a time clock that our staff will monitor. Attendees and participants at any legislative public hearing should be aware that these proceedings are video recorded, and their likeness may be included in any video coverage shown on television or on the internet. I want to thank, um, the State Liquor Authority, Lilly Fan, for being here. Uh, we've been trying to do this hearing for about three years now, and then we finally have a commissioner that wanted to come before us and testify.
Yay.
So I want to thank you for that. Um, you know, this is something that has been, uh, vexing members all around the state regarding what we can do to make the State Liquor Authority better. Uh, we're glad that you got appointed last year, um, late last year, or middle of last year to, uh, work on the State Liquor Authority, knowing that you have had, uh, experience in government before. Uh, so we're very happy that you're here. I will now turn it over to my co-chair, uh, Senator James Scoofus, to make his introductory remarks, and then Senator Jessica Ramos.
Thanks very much, Senator Comrie, and it's great to partner with you on, on this hearing. I agree with you that it's, it's long overdue. I, you know, when we think about in the legislature alcohol issues, you know, I think we're all mindful that, you know, this, this is not the most game-changing, world-changing, uh, life-changing, uh, issue that we deal with, uh, in any given legislative session. But we're also mindful that, uh, making sure that we have A B C laws and, and an S L A that works and is responsive, uh, you know, is, is important on an issue that touches millions of consumers on any given, uh, day, week, year, and certainly our small business community on premise, off premise. And I, I am really delighted, uh, that we have a new chair and, uh, a new team of executive staff at the S L A. Uh, the improvement has been stark, in my opinion, from the previous administration. And, uh, and that's like credit to you, I, I, Ms. Fan, and your responsiveness to the legislature, to the public, to stakeholders. Uh, you inherited a mess. I don't think there's any expectation that, uh, you and your team would be able to resolve that mess overnight or within weeks or even months. But I, I know that we have the right team in place to finally resolve the longstanding challenges, uh, that have existed within the S L A. And I think you'd be the first to admit that there are existing significant challenges, uh, that you're still dealing with, uh, within the S L A. And, and so, you know, I'm looking forward to the conversation. Obviously, there's a, a separate budget conversation that's happening around, uh, A B C issues, uh, that many of us are engaged with. But, uh, but certainly, I'm, I'm delighted to work with my co-chair and, and look forward to today's hearing. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Um, well, good morning, everyone. Um, as, as has been said, it's been a really great pleasure to be able to work with you, Commissioner Fan. Um, the disaster that happened during the pandemic was very palpable, uh, especially by our restaurants and bars. I say that as, uh, the Senator representing District Thirteen in Jackson Heights and Corona and East Elmhurst, where we're known for great food and great hospitality. And we know the hard work that these entrepreneurs, uh, put into providing jobs in our community. And just oftentimes in the past, S L A has been a hindrance, uh, to them being able to conduct business and being able to, uh, uh, provide that level of hospitality, uh, in our communities. So we've seen a very marked change, um, in your tenure thus far, and we hope it continues. We hope you see us as your partners, um, in improving those A B C laws and hopefully, uh, bringing New York back, uh, even better than we ever were before the pandemic. So I'm, I'm looking forward to this conversation.
Uh, thank you, my colleagues. Uh, uh, I will now turn it over to Commissioner, Commissioner Fan. Is it, what's the first title? I keep forgetting.
It's, uh, Chair.
Chair Fan, right.
But you can call me Lily. Thank you.
Lily. Um, and, uh, for your opening remarks, I just want to say thank you again for coming. Um, this has been a labor to, uh, make this happen, and members have been asking for it. You know, we want to make sure that New York is hospitality-friendly to businesses. And unfortunately, New York has a reputation of being one of the, um, ten worst states for doing business. Uh, we hope to make sure that we can, um, improve that. That's why I was excited when you decided to take on this role last year. And I look forward to working to do whatever's necessary to make sure that the agency is, um, in a place that businesses can be happy with, that we can get businesses, uh, from start to finish on their licenses in a manner that they can feel comfortable with. Um, so with that, I'll turn the floor over to you for your ten-minute statement.
Thank you. Good morning, Senator Comrie, Senator Scoofus, and Senator Ramos. My name is Lilly Fan, and I currently serve as Chair and Commissioner of the State Liquor Authority. Before my elevation last year, I served for five years as a Per Diem Commissioner on the three-member full board, and before that, five years on Manhattan Community Board Four. I'm here today with my chief of staff, Bill Crowley, who is an eighteen-year veteran at our division, and our Acting Director of Administration, Casey Bullis, who has been with us for seven years. I want to start by thanking you for this opportunity to discuss the work of our division and the challenges we face. Your time and investment of brain power touches our hearts. In two thousand twenty-three, the Division of Alcoholic Beverage Control collected a total of fifty-seven point four million in revenue. All fees and penalties collected by our division are remitted to the state's general fund. The governor's two thousand twenty-five executive budget includes sixteen point five million dollars in appropriation for our division. We currently have a hundred and nineteen full-time employees and thirty-five hourly staff statewide. The division oversees fifty-nine thousand licenses, including, including twenty-three thousand bars, taverns, and restaurants, sixteen thousand grocery stores, thirty-four hundred liquor and wine stores, nine hundred wholesalers, and twelve hundred manufacturers. Last year, our agency issued around eighteen thousand event permits and seventeen thousand temporary permits. Collectively, these businesses generate two hundred and eighty-two million dollars in excise taxes for the state in two thousand twenty-three and provided hundreds of thousands of jobs last year. On the manufacturing front, our state currently ranks in the top five in the U.S. for the number of craft beverage producers in every category. We are number one in cider production, number two in both beer and distilled spirits, and number four in wine. Strikingly, the alcoholic beverage industry in New York State generated nearly seventy-nine billion in direct spending in two thousand twenty-two. New Yorkers spent fifty-nine billion dollars on alcoholic beverages in two thousand twenty-two. Since before the pandemic, our division has had a backlog of applications. When I was confirmed as Chair by the New York State Senate eight months ago, the division was facing a backlog in the thousands and processing time of over nine months. As you know, eliminating this backlog and reducing processing time is a priority for the governor and our division. Governor Hoco has taken decisive steps to address the backlog. Her fiscal two thousand twenty-three budget provided an additional thirty-nine full-time employees for our licensing bureau. Like everyone else, we have faced many challenges in hiring. However, since July twenty-three, with Casey's hard work, we have brought on fifteen additional licensing examiners. Civil Services, Services' new New York Helps program will hopefully also aid in transitioning some of our hourly staff to full-time positions. Attrition is a high challenge for us. With the support of O G S, D O B, and Civil Service, we continue to pursue reorganization of our licensing bureau to ensure that we're retaining knowledgeable examiners who are focused on customer service and precision. In November, our full board approved a delegation to create a backlog committee that includes senior staff and licensing examiners to attack the problem. The committee started working immediately, developing a pared-down checklist for review and training for staff. The committee, which now operates in all three offices with fifteen members, began reviewing applications on January tenth. As of yesterday, the committee has reviewed almost four hundred applications in total. In seven weeks, we have addressed seven percent of the backlog. More importantly, since we started, our capacity has increased by eleven percent each week as the committee staff members continue to increase and they become more familiar with the new review process. The committee staff is now able to review four, uh, five to six applications each per day, which is up from one to three using our prior procedure. The committee is authorized by full board for six months, and likely it will be necessary to reauthorize. Our division is confident that in the very near future, licensing response time will return to a reasonable weight of three to four months. Separately, in December of twenty-one, the governor signed a law providing new restaurants in New York City eligibility for temporary licenses for the first time. Approximately seventy percent of applicants qualify for temporary permits that would allow them to sell and serve while their license applications are pending. These permits allow businesses to open their doors in less than thirty days on average, provided that the five-hundred-foot law does not apply. The number of temporary permits issued by our division, in fact, exploded to seventeen thousand in two thousand twenty-three. To address this fight in a timely manner, half of our licensing staff time was taken up by issuing and renewing temporary permits, which added to the backlog of the general application pool last year. In September, the full board voted to allow applicants to apply for temporary renewals for up to ninety days at a time, which has been instrumental in keeping the amount of paperwork involved down for both permissions and our licensing bureau. Additionally, the governor also worked with the legislature to approve legislation that would allow all craft manufacturers to, for, to be eligible for temporary permits, to serve and begin manufacturing while their license applications are pending. These permits allowed our craft manufacturing businesses to start operating and bringing in revenue in a matter of weeks after applying, ensuring that New York remains a national leader in craft beverage production. And most excitingly, on May one, two thousand twenty-three, the S L A, along with the legislature and the governor, released a report from the Commission to Study Reform of the Alcoholic Beverage Control Law. We believe that this report can serve as a guide to implement important and necessary, necessary changes to the A B C law. Two of the twenty-eight recommendations were already signed into law this past October, expanding Sunday hours for liquor stores and grocery stores. Other recommendations are still being evaluated and considered, as you know. It is heartening to know that the governor recognizes that change is necessary and that the legislature and the governor are continuing to look for ways to work together to improve the A B C laws. This past few months, we have also spent a lot of our time on technological improvements to bring the S L A into the twenty-first century. It was perhaps slightly unfair to our staff to have a change in leadership and also a change in their day-to-day software program in the same year. Change is unset, unsettling and causes anxiety and delays. In October, as many of you know, we launched Leap. For now, it is simply back-office operations. The Leap front portal is only currently taking permits applications. Sometime in the future, applicants will be able to apply for all license types and pay for fees online. In addition, when the system is fully implemented, our database will drastically reduce missing items in applications, which is a major culprit in delays. Other tools we have deployed also include a new mapping program, Lamp, and a new branding label, and, and a new brand labeling tool, which expedites brand label approvals. And very soon, we're going to switch to a new price posting software that will be a robust and simple platform so that purchasing alcoholic products is an easy and simple task for all retailers. Also, the state's Open Data Program has made transparency an achievable priority. The state's new FOIL system has also made it easy for us to handle requests. But in sum, you see a lot of changes, and our staff is working hard to step up to the plate and learn these tools and meet the challenges in order to provide the best services on all fronts. Since pandemic, enforcement has slowed to allow recovery. The division enforcement resources are focused on cracking down on serious violation of the law. It is important to note that all of our enforcement is complaint-based. The vast majority of charges brought by the division stems from referrals from neighbors and our partners in law, local law enforcement and other agencies. Eventually, we hope to expand our efforts to educate the public about responsible drinking and assist our licensee in managing their premises better. I'm proud of the work that our division has accomplished over the last eight months, and I'm enthusiastic to work with the legislature to implement necessary changes. We have done a lot in this short time, and we're crystal clear on the fact that there's a lot more work to be done. I want to take this opportunity to thank all the industry members and stakeholders who have submitted testimony and have traveled here to speak for their interests and represent their constituents. They're all friends of ours, and we continue to work together to improve our commodities competitive within our state and beyond. I also want to thank our team, which has worked very hard in the past eight months to deal with changes and implement better customer service for our licensees. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. I'm grateful for your attention. I truly value our partnership and hope that many more conversations will follow our exchange today. I am happy to take your questions.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony, um, Chair Fan. I appreciate the, um, work that has been done over the last eight months to try to improve the backlog. Um, and I wanted to focus on the issues of, um, transparency for businesses. How are you telling, um, how are you working with new restaurant applications? And is there a ombudsman in the office that can work with, um, new businesses with owners that are not conversing in how to do a license? Do you have an ombudsman program to work with new businesses?
When I was confirmed eight months ago, we made a commitment to the legislature that we would hire Community Affairs Representative. I am, um, proud to say that we have, um, David Stoller, who is here today, um, who is our Zone One Regional Representative. We also have Jill Clark out in our Zone Three office, who is also, um, addressing Community Affairs and Licensing inquiries. Um, there is a, you know, electronic inbox where people can send emails to ask questions. We have a call center, um, that Tax and Finance runs for us, that also take questions. Um, we can certainly do better in answering questions. Um, our software is intended to become very user-friendly. There should be a day when people should just be able to get online, you know, file, file their application, answer the questions, put in their credit card, pay the fees, and really, it should be very simple, and we look forward to being able to, uh, work towards that.
And do you see that happening within the next ten months?
Um, the software right now is, um, we are dealing with a lot of bugs that, um, are related to the back office, because as the law continues to change, uh, tools, new tools need to get built. Um, the front portal is now taking permits application, which I believe is working very well. Um, we hope to continue to launch Leap, um, hopefully within the next twelve months. Uh, but we're really trying to make sure that what's existing is stable and, um, usable for our staff, uh, before we continue to move forward.
And how, um, how has the staff, um, embraced this technology? Have there, are there opportunities for regular, um, training meetings for the staff? Or, uh, do they have a?
Yes, um, we have worked very closely with I T S. Um, in fact, you know, all of our staff have each sort of become their own software engineers. Um, they are, you know, trying to do their work, and our bureaus would sit in a room together with our I T S, with our vendor to look at things that they cannot achieve or everybody is working together to try to find better ways, um, to work with the system. It's, um, it's moving along, you know, software launches are not easy. And there, our work is very complicated. There's a lot of ins and outs. Um, there are a lot of automated functions, um, that we're trying to take a closer look at to make sure that we're actually communicating with our applicants and licensee in an effective and accurate manner.
And do you do, um, uh, have you thought about doing workshops for the licensees to come in on like a quarterly basis to learn how to access the system?
There are, um, tutorials that are available on our website that people can use. I have heard that, um, you know, some people find them useful. Um, and we encourage everyone to try to look at those tutorials first before asking a lot, uh, uh, asking questions. In the end, we have a hundred and nine, nineteen people, and we don't really have the staff to answer all the questions. We try to communicate as closely as we can with our call center so that they know how to answer the questions. Um, but it's, um, it's a staffing issue for us.
And, um, you said earlier that you're looking for staff. What kind of, um, what, 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 what are the qualifications that you need for a staff person?
Um, so I will tell you honestly that, uh, we are looking to hire a lot of lawyers. Um, this work is complicated. Um, and so in, um, my short time, I have elevated a lot of lawyers into leadership, um, that are seasoned. And so Council's office needs to be backfilled. Um, separately, you know, we also have positions open for civil service staff. Um, and we are looking for really energetic and smart civil service staff that really are committed to the industry and wants to do this work. Um, working in licensing or enforcement is no walk in the park for us. And, uh, we rely really on, um, our internal dedication to our staff to, to retain them, really. Um, and so, um, it's not easy. We are a small agency, and so we don't necessarily have the steps to, um, allow for, um, growth. And so, um, often we, um, just can't retain them. But, uh, we are working hard. We're trying to, um, change the tone of how we operate. And, um, and so far, we, we've been doing, we've been doing, really, we've been doing okay.
I appreciate that from your testimony, and especially, um, when you're talking about your backlog committee to reduce the backlog and how that committee has formed and, uh, established new procedures for tracking and reporting on eligible applications. I just wanted to, um, try to get out the, to, we have a lot of, um, I have a lot of new businesses that are trying to set up in, uh, around the state with people that are not necessarily expert at developing or setting up a business. They have, um, and they, they know how to, they know how to cook or they know how to, you know, to run a restaurant, um, from the mechanical part. But as far as the administrative part, they need a lot of help, um, to get established. They need to, um, be able to talk to someone. And unfortunately, there are a lot of, um, uh, brokers out there. They claim they're going to help businesses that only, you know, send them down a, a path to frustration. So I'm looking to figure out a way to how to eliminate that so that we can get, um, you know, the businesses the direct services that they need so they're not paying thousands of dollars and still not getting, getting their license. So, um, anything that we can do to help you with creating that, uh, technology or, or giving the extra dollars to make that happen would save people hours and, and up to years in trying to get licensed.
Yeah, thank you.
So the, you said the back, the backlog committee has to be reappointed? Or is it going to stay in place for?
I think full board, um, will just have to reauthorize it in a delegation. And we plan to do that in, um, April or May. We will present that to the full board.
When you say the delegation, what does that mean exactly?
It means, um, there is a document that got drafted, and the, essentially, the agency leadership is presenting it to full board, which is just me and presenting it to myself and another commissioner. And we vote to authorize it so that, um, there's something on paper that is guiding, um, the process and making sure that it's fair and it's laid out.
Thank you. And, um, also, I'm glad to see that you've had, uh, the governor has allowed for temporary permits that seventy percent applicants can qualify for. Has that, how has that been advertised, and how is that being advertised?
The temp permits? Um, that's a good question. I mean, we, um, it's in the press releases from the agency. It's in the press releases from the governor's office. We have a lot of, um, as you said, um, you know, lawyers and representatives that are communicating that to the applicants. Um, it's on our website, but you're probably right that we could do more on all fronts about educating and communicating with applicants and licensee. When we get the backlog down, we get back down to zero, and then some of this, um, intention can be put into place.
If you could develop a one-pager that we could all throw out in our newsletters, that would help as well. Um, you know, so we could, uh, most of us now do weekly emails to, to the community about things that are happening, and then we could distribute it to, uh, community boards and other relevant places as well so that they could know about this and help be an R M T to get that advertised so that businesses could be aware of it, um, that.
We communicate a lot with the community boards. Um, you know, there are some that are more active than others, and one of my goals is to try to get in front of the community boards more and more.
We can, we can help you with that outreach too, because we, um, most of us appear at our community boards on as often as possible, um, monthly whenever they can, uh, or whenever we're not stuck in, uh, Albany all night. But, um, you know, it's, it's a, we, we can, we can, uh, try to help you with that. Um, the, the commission report that came out, um, we only passed two recommendations. Um, what would you think would be the two most important recommendations that we should pass next?
Well, as the agency, you know, I, I am, you know, I don't opine on, you know, pending legislation. Um, however, in the governor's, um, budget, you know, what is included in the Article Seven language are pros, uh, um, you know, priorities that include, that prioritize, uh, making licensing easier. You know, something that has to do with corporate change will go into effect after ninety days, um, temporary, um, beer, wine, cider, and liquor permits, temporary wholesale permits, um, mostly on the, on the, um, licensing, um, process, um, issues.
Well, I'm over my ten minutes. I'm going to behave myself and shift over to, uh, Senator Scoofus, and then I'll follow up with some questions after Senator Ramos.
You're always well behaved, Senator Comrie. Uh, thanks, thanks for your questions, and thanks again, um, Chair Fan, for being here and your leadership. Uh, I've got a few questions, and I, we can go from there. The first, uh, you know, this came up at your confirmation hearing, I believe. Um, there was then, and, and there still is now, a vacancy on your board. Have you run into any issues with, uh, literally one out of three members of your board? Uh, not having a position filled with either quorum or, or any other issues?
Um, luckily, we have not run into issues. I was serving on a two-member board for years before I became Chair. Um, it's a lot of responsibility to basically not die. Um, and, um, and so that's where we're at right now. Um, that third position is, it's hard to fill. Um, I know that, um, the appointments office is working very hard on it, and we hope to be able to have someone before the end of, um, this legislative session.
Conversations to, to fill that position this session.
But it's a hard job to do, honestly.
Yeah. One of the, I, I believe, most important. Uh, one of the I I believe most important uh things that you mentioned in your opening remarks. You mentioned a lot of important things, but one of the uh one of the items that jumped out at me was the committee that you all put together to address backlogs. I you've gone from reviewing and and processing, I guess, one to three uh applications to now five to six. That's a that's a meaningful jump. I um what's your goal? What's the end goal? Is it five have you met the end goal? Is it five to six or?
I think five to six is what is realistic now. Um, you know.
And help me understand who comprises this committee? You mentioned a little bit, but is is every license examiner a part of this committee? Or is the?
Not everyone. Um, we are, you know, there are actually ten examiners um and five people who are members of what we call licensing board. Um, and uh ten examiners um in three offices, five members of licensing board who are more senior licensing examiners.
So are the examiners not on this committee still using the old protocol?
Yes, and they are also um doing permitting work. Um, they are, some of them are new, and so they're doing grocery store review. Um, and so, you know, you can, in our numbers, grocery stores, we're reviewing now up to November of twenty-three. You filed November twenty-three. We are already there with um general um on-premise applications. You know, we are back reviewing in June, et cetera. But yes, we have overall, I think, um we have a total of um sixty-two full-time employees in licensing, fifteen of which are working on the backlog committee.
Got it. So most are are not on this committee. Is the is the expectation, given the efficiencies that this committee has demonstrated, is the expectation that eventually the other fifty or so that are not on the committee will be operating, you know, with this more efficient?
Well, there is a um there is a group of that is doing clerical work. And so that will not change because they need to enter the data while we're transitioning between two systems. Um, there is a bunch of people that are doing permitting, and so that's not part of the backlog committee. Um, and then we have the supervisors who are overseeing um and, you know, sort of giving guidance and answering fielding questions, answering questions from enforcement, answering questions from the public. You know, that takes also a significant amount of staff time.
Right, so it's not fifty, there aren't fifty license examiners who are doing licenses that are not part of this process. It's a much smaller number. But nevertheless, same question, is the expectation they're gonna be working within this new paradigm that this committee is working within?
We hope that there will be more staff that will become ready and available to do the work that is part of the committee.
And you have sixty what? What was the exact number in the licensing division?
We have um sixty-two full-time employees and twelve hourly employees in licensing currently.
How many, in in your opinion, do you need up from sixty-two to fully address the backlog at the S L A?
I think right.
Because you men- you mentioned that there's a there's a manpower and womanpower issue, and there are certain things in your line of questioning with Senator Comrie that you would like to do that you just don't have the people to do. How many people do you need to address this problem?
So I think right now we still have vacancies that we need to fill. And the budget that we've been given this year should sufficiently meet what we need because we just need to get to our fill first. Like, we need to hire the people. New York Helps is gonna help us get some of our hourly staff into position so that we can actually retain them and keep them. That's more the problem is is the re- the, you know, the retaining and the pro- um promotional um opportunities within our agency. So we're working with civil service and we're working with D O B and O G S to try to build up um higher-level positions. And we're having those conversations, and they've been very, very encouraging.
Okay. As you likely know, this is not a novel problem. Uh, there there have been backlogs in in years past. I it seems to ebb and flow. Back in two thousand and nine, there was a backlog, I understand, of a little over three thousand. And so this has been a problem in the past at times.
Absolutely.
Uh, in twenty fourteen, the backlog actually dropped to a hundred and basically non-existent. And my understanding, one of the main drivers I i- in those interim years that reduced that number to such a low number was the sort of uh the the development of this self-certification program within the S L A, where an applicant could, you know, get a lawyer and they could basically self-certify and fill out a lot of the things that you guys would otherwise fill out within the S L A. And I understand that that program has been phased out. There were some questions surrounding that program uh in subsequent years. Do do you feel that there's a self-certification two-point-oh that could be brought to the S L A to help address the existing backlog?
Um, thank you for the question. Um, so I was part of the full board that voted to end the self-certification program. Um, so um, the quick answer is probably not. Um, the reason is because um initially, when the self-cert program came on board, it was very helpful in trying to clear the backlog. But today, we are really trying to use our software to deal directly with the applicants. And there and we are hopeful that there will be the day when we can communicate with the majority of the applicants that have simple applications. Of course, there are gonna be complicated businesses that need lawyering help, and and we respect that. Um, but the self-cert program, you know, anecdotally, what we've heard from applicants is that it was sort of becoming an expediting um process as Senator Comrie mentioned, that, you know, there were extra fees involved in it. But from our end, we did not see a better quality of application that was coming in through that program. Essentially, from our end, it took the same amount of time to review an a self-cert program application and a regular application. And it was just that the applicants were get were having to pay more.
Okay.
And they had a different expectation because they were part of that program. And then in the end, it was the agency's fault when we were not able to um give them the license in the timely manner that was explained to them. And so
Okay.
I think we're trying to um really use technology to address that and not go back to um a self-cert program.
Understood. What is your timeframe for for bringing this LEAP portal to applicants, allowing them to apply online, pay their fees online, et cetera? When do you expect that public portal to be forward-facing?
You know, software launches are very, very difficult. It's been very, very challenging for us. Um, we have a lot of things. And as the law continues to change, every session, we have to build new tools. And you know, and there and you know, there is a cost associated with it. So we're.
Who's taking the lead on this? Is this internally S L A folks or is it I T S who's really driving the ship or on the software?
Our deputy commissioner um for operations, Lisa Ogden, has essentially become a software engineer while she's also fixing hearing bureau and secretary's office. She's done so much work and has done really great um communicating with between the staff and I T S. I T S have been very supportive. They've de- they've given us dedicated staff um to address and build more tools and try to, you know, address the fire drills that are happening, you know.
Your deputy sounds like is acting as sort of a coordinator, but I T S is building the portal. Is that fair?
Um, there is also a vendor who is working with I T S that is actually doing the work.
Okay.
And of course, there are contractual issues. There are payment issues. This has been very, very delayed. And so we're actually waiting for um, you know, funding to come through for that work to continue.
I'd like to follow up with you offline on on this. You know, it's and we talked a little bit about this at your confirmation hearing. Uh, you know, it's I I'm inherently an impatient person, and so perhaps I'm not the best barometer here. But, you know, you've got teenagers inventing apps in like three weeks. And, you know, we can't get uh an S L A portal uh up and running and forward-facing in in a year. And, you know, that, to me, as a layperson, that that's, you know, a little astonishing. And my hope is that, you know, perhaps between the governor's office and and, you know, maybe other pressure, we can get I T S to better prioritize I this this work and and get it up and running faster. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, well, Chair Fan, um, in two thousand twenty-two, I passed a bill to grant New York City businesses the same access to temporary liquor licenses that bars and restaurants in the rest of the state could enjoy. And to be honest, this has helped many restaurants in my district tremendously. And I'm wondering if you can speak to um how expanding uh this the ability to to have these temporary liquor licenses would perhaps be able to help your endeavors in streamlining the S L A?
Um, so, you know, there are always two sides to it. Um, I think that we really welcome um the um the legislation to allow temporary permits. Um, that has created a flood of applications. And um making it less restrictive will be helpful because then we have less work to do as far as far as parsing it out. So, you know, if everybody qualifies for a temp under the law, that would be the easiest thing for our agency because then we just give it to everybody. Does that make sense?
It does, it does. Thank you. I wanted to get that answer on the record. Um, I'm gonna get a little more uh hyper-local to my district. You know, I feel like in the age of Amazon, when there just aren't that many different types of small businesses anymore, actually, bars and restaurants are allowed to bring a lot of diverse uh different types of uh entertainment and places for people to enjoy along our commercial corridors. But on some corridors, like Roosevelt Avenue, where there might be an oversaturation of uh bars and restaurants, um, I I was wondering if you could delve a little deeper to the part of your testimony where you talked about complaint-based uh investigations and what types of serious violations you your team does take the time to look into. Um, I know for a fact that there are, and you and I have spoken about this issue, um, that um there are a lot of bars along Roosevelt Avenue, for example, who have girls dancing for two dollars a song, um, but have not disclosed that in their liquor application or renewal application.
Um, again, I will say that we are complaint-based and we take referrals from local law enforcement. Um, there are certain methods of operation um that if they're not disclosed and not approved by the licensing bureau, it would, in theory, be in violation of the premises license. And so we would welcome. You know, I mean, there are different levels of seriousness, you know? Like, you know, when there's a loss of life, that's very serious. When there is L two minor, that's very serious. Um, not disclosing um, you know, uh employee dancing um would be considered um a um, you know, uh uh, you know, untruthfulness on their application. Um, it's not really considered super serious. But if that dancing then is leading to community noise and other um disruptive behavior, and it ends up being a focal point for police, that is very serious.
Okay, including after-hours, operating after-hours?
Oh, absolutely. I think violating um allowable hours is a is a serious violation. But I think we welcome the complaint. Uh, people should go on the S L A website um and and let us know that, you know, there are licensed premises that are operating outside of their method.
So in your opinion, would a nightclub, for example, like the Brooklyn Mirage, where people have died, um, do you believe the S L A should take away their liquor license?
So I can't comment on individual licenses. Um, if there is a loss of life, we certainly take it very seriously.
Okay, well, I I I would recommend you looking into the operations of that particular uh place. Um, I think I can squeeze in two more. Um, I'm a former community board member like you and like my dad before me. Um, so I love the work of community boards. And it I have known, you know, for a very long time that there's pretty much an entire industry that surrounds uh the ability for these restaurant owners to apply and get approved for these liquor licenses. Sometimes they're actual attorneys. Sometimes they are just some sort of community processors that end up charging uh uh our entrepreneurs, I mean, thousands and thousands of dollars. And I'm wondering if it's your hope that, you know, through a a better software interface or, you know, how it is that we can save our entrepreneurs a little money on this front um so that so that they're able to to actually put it into their business? It just it seems it seems like not only is getting the license tedious because the the process is such, but also just the mere cost of of all of the supposed help that you need to attain one is is a lot of money.
I I agree with you that it breaks my heart also that our applicants and potential business owners are being taken advantage of um by some of these representatives. You know, many of them are very good and but some of them are um taking advantage and not delivering the services that they should. Um, it's certainly, as Senator Comrie mentioned, it is a hope of mine that the state can take over some of these costs and try to educate and be available and, you know, and that there is a direct line. And, you know, moving forward, you know, we hope to perhaps work with city agencies that are really good at this and try to coordinate together and go out and do more presentations.
What's your favorite city agency that's good at this? Come on. All right, it's okay, Chair Fan, you don't have to answer that. Um, let me just ask another question. So at, you know, S L A can revoke licenses over unpaid child support and other civil and criminal violations. You know, over the summer, ProPublica and documented, uh, published a series of reports on the endemic wage theft that takes place in New York with a particular focus in the restaurant industry. Does S L A take labor violations into account when considering granting or renewing licenses?
Um, under our statute, we do not take prior um labor violations into consideration. Um, but if we get a referral from another agency, we certainly take that seriously.
What do you mean by prior?
Um, I mean, if they had an exist, uh, like a prior license where they were um charged with wage theft, when they apply again for the next license, that's probably not in our records. However, if they are violating it while they're holding the license and we get a referral from Department of Labor or um or from Workers' Comm about it, we certainly look at that and take that seriously. And we have an improper conduct charge um that we would file. And um, so we, um, as an agency, do owe our licensee a due process. And so um, we have to use the charges that exist in the A B C laws to go after our licensee for their violations.
Mm-hmm, so you're saying the D O L would have to let you know that there is a significant wage theft claim? I s- I I I'm mentioning this because last year, the governor signed into law an increased criminal penalty for wage theft, establishing a threshold of a thousand dollars. Now, I didn't I didn't support the bill. But I do somehow believe that wage theft has, you know, not been deterred altogether. It persists, um, and particularly in the hospitality industry. Um, and so I I don't believe that um bad actors who continuously engage in uh wage theft knowingly um should be awarded um a a liquor license renewal. Um, so I I've introduced legislation precisely to address uh that persistent issue. And I'm hoping it'll level the playing field for the best for the best actors in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, okay, I just wanted to go down that road a little bit more. Um, when a restaurant um gets a gets raided by the police and they get a series of um of uh complaints or actions filed against them, um, a lot of them don't know how to go to the process to get those removed. Uh, is there uh what is the the process that you're aware to that those restaurants can get back to uh operation?
Sorry, Senator, do you mean, how do you mean when you say?
The the police raid a uh uh the restaurant and they find violations, um violations of uh, um, I guess, whatever those violations are from either partying or doing um business illegally or not. Um, a series of uh uh technical violations as well are issued upon them. Um, and they have no idea how to get it resolved um because they're not um, they don't they don't have a lawyer. They don't have, um, they they have to access someone that has an expertise in that level. Is there a um a and a way that they can go back to the um to a phone number or? to a phone number or a, a, a technical person within your agency that can help walk them through what they need to do to resolve the, the violations?
Um, so again, we are complaint-based and we take referrals from other um, local law enforcement.
Right.
Generally, I will tell you that we do not have the staff to go out for visits. Very, very often, the first few times of violations, the licensee is receiving a letter of advice from our agency. We're really not a heavy-handed agency, you know, besides the time during the pandemic, that was, that was a special time. Um, when charges are filed, our counsel's office do take the evidence very seriously. They really look and make sure that there is enough evidence to, to make the charge and prosecute the case. Um, the licensee receive a notice of um, pleading and they can certainly call the lawyer in charge to discuss and ask more questions about them. Probably 90% of charges are resolved by what we call conditional no contest. Very few people actually go to trial with our agency and it's a fine that they pay. Unfortunately, those, those charges become part of your license premises' record and it goes on the record of the licensee and, and that is, um, and that is the, the cost of, um, of, of submitting to the jurisdiction of being a licensee in the state of New York.
Uh, according to your um, statistics in your testimony, you bore proceedings against um, 1,488 licensees. There are currently 791 open investigations.
Yes.
Um, you did 59 underage operations, visiting. And um, you collected over $3 million in penalties. So, this, I'm trying to, trying to understand, how can a business quickly get through resolving those issues? But you're saying that you don't currently have the staff to, to make, give those folks, uh, some clear operations on how they can clean up the violations. A lot of businesses don't, are not aware that they're in violation until after they get fined. Um, they're not aware of, uh, what they're doing. Some are, but most of them are not. And I was just wondering how we could develop a process to get them some opportunities to resolve these issues without having to, um, to.
I mean, again, our, our counsel's office take our um, responsibility on due process very seriously. If we're filing charges, we are sending notices to the landlord, we're sending notices to the licensee and we're also sending notices to the lawyers. So, if they don't know about it, that's because they're not checking their mail and not checking their email. And um, you know, generally, they get the ones where we give them the fine, but they didn't get the one before that. So, you know, sometimes it's, you know, we also have questions about why certain things get received and other things don't get received. Um, we, we do our best in moving it along. Um, right now, our hearing bureau does not have a backlog in um, in disciplinary cases. I mean, it's really, there are, you know, less than 20, less than 15 disciplinary cases that have decisions pending. Um, once decisions come out and once CNCs are submitted, we do have a queue for everything to go to full board to get um, rubber stamped, so to speak. Um, and that queue could, could take a few months. But other than that, you know, the process does work. And um, we have only nine full-time lawyers handling, last year, almost 1,300 cases. Um, the volume is high, but we are doing the work and, and we are delivering on the public safety and um, promoting temperance side of our mission.
Hearing Bureau doesn't have a real backlog, that is good to know. So, the, the cases are being brought before them and just still getting complaints from, just to be hyper-local, from my restaurants that they seem to get caught in violations on a regular basis from the police department. Um, and they are not even aware that they're in violation. Um, you know, they are getting complaints. But I have a residential neighborhood, so they, they, they drop complaints on a regular, on these restaurants. But then, some of the restaurants have no idea what they're even, um, being accused of until after the complaint is dropped. Is there, is there a way to pre, pre-alert some of these businesses that they're in violation? As opposed to just having the police department come in and shut them down?
I mean, again, we don't, um, we don't send the police necessarily. Again, we, we don't have the staff to show up to everything that we receive complaints on. You know, um, if we show up, it's likely that we've already sent multiple letters of advice to tell them that your, your neighbors are unhappy with your operation. That's why we really, really encourage life, um, licensees to have a good relationship with their community board and with the local police department. In the end, it's a localized relationship that they need to have, you know. When I was on the community board, we always asked, um, the licensees to give their phone numbers to their immediate neighbor. And they have to massage those relationships and make sure that their neighbors are happy with them and not get into a very adversarial situation because we, we, you know, we are the victim of that as well. When people file a lot of complaints, um, it's also worked for us. So, we, we want people to mediate their issues locally and figure it out, um, between one another.
Thank you. I appreciate that answer. Um, clearly, that's something that we have to inform our local businesses or just have a lot of local businesses that are, um, as they're establishing, they're learning how to do that and they're not expert at communication at that level and constantly working with them to be better in, in their communications with their local community. Um, I just wanna, um, just finally ask you one other thing. Um, a-again, I'll go back to the recommendations that were, uh, in the 2023 law. Um, you know, the, the, the 500 and 200-foot rule, um, do you think that's still necessary in this day and time?
Um, again, I, I, we are not opining on, um, you know, any pending legislation or I, or legislative ideas that are coming. Um, we are, we enforce the law. We, you know, if it's written into stone, then we will take away our process and we're happy to do so. Because the 500-foot hearings, those are the ones where we do have a backlog. Um, and if we don't have to do them, you know, we, we will be happy. Um, but, you know, again, we are managing both sides, right? If you take away 500-foot, then oversaturation is gonna become a problem. The licensing will be easier, but then enforcement will have more work.
Right.
That's the, you know, that's a complication of our agency is that we're holding the bag on both sides.
Do you think, do you think oversaturation would happen? I think, um, we need to look about another process to figure out how much density you could have for, uh, certain restaurants within a residential neighborhood as opposed to that rule. I think that's something I'd like to explore, um, with my colleagues to see how we could come to the agency with another solution. I don't know many churches that are, are, are hung up on the 500-foot or 200-foot rule anymore, you know. But I think that's something we need to look at as opposed to. Uh, my, my, again, as I was saying in the beginning, my, my main goal is to try to make this a, a more, uh, business-friendly state with an ability for new businesses and startups to be able to get their, their licensing and, and, um, approvals done within a timely manner. It's not just SLA, but, you know, in, in New York State, uh, between the Buildings Department and the Health Department and the Fire Department and, and, and City Hall and new rules, it just, it just takes way too long for a business to get up and running. Um, and we need to figure out ways to do that, so I'll be happy to work with you on that. Um, do you have any additional questions?
No questions, yeah.
Just to follow up on a couple of things, thank you again for your time here. How many days long is, does a temporary permit stay in effect for?
So, the initial, uh, um, temp permit is 90 days.
And renewals are for 90 days as well, right?
And then, for renewals is three 30-day periods, so it's 90 days in effect.
Okay. Is that duration in statute or do you set that duration?
That is in statute.
It is.
And the renewal is, um, a regulation from the agency.
It is, okay. I- is there any, certainly, you know, look, from, if it's in statute, then this is obviously on the legislature on us. But for the renewals at least, has there been any contemplation, uh, to, to extend those durations? One of the frustrations that, that I hear, as the backlog exists and hopefully one day soon it will not exist, but as it exists now, one of the frustrations is when you, when you have a, an applicant who's, who's pursuing a license. From their point of view, the reason why they don't have a license and they have to wait five, six, seven, eight months, whatever it is, is it's an SLA problem, it's not a problem with me, it's a problem with them. Yet, they are the ones making me pay for all these renewals.
Yes.
So, you know, I, I understand that the, the initial temporary permit, there's a cost associated. You want to do business now while you're waiting. There's an argument to be had that that's a, a fair cost to levy. But has there been any contemplation about extending the duration of the renewal so they don't have to apply for multiple renewals and pay for multiple fees with each renewal?
Um, thank you for the question. I really, I appreciate that. Um, I think that with one 90-day and then one renewal, 180 days, we're getting pretty close to being able to actually issue the license. You know, there may be one more 90-day after that, get us to 270 days. I just want to mention that when you're operating under a temporary permit, while the cost may be higher than a regular license, the business is actually operating without any enforcement ability coming from our agency. And so, we try to, there is a reason, there is a, you know, policy reason for us to keep it at 90 days so that if the business is very disruptive to the community, that we have an opportunity to hear from local law enforcement and perhaps not allow the renewal to happen. I'm not saying this is happening a lot, this is very, very rare, but we do have businesses operating under temporary permits that are caught with sell-to minor, that are caught with a lot of disturbance. Um, you know, some have shootings happening and we do say that you cannot renew your temporary permit. And so, the 90 days sort of give us an opportunity to look at that and do a review on our end because other than that, we can, we don't have the jurisdiction to file charges against a permit holder.
So, I understand while you may not have that enforcement power, certainly, you know, at least some of the things that you just rattled off are, are criminal in nature. For example, selling to a minor, local police can certainly enforce.
Absolutely. And we get a referral and then we say, well, they're operating under a temp permit. And then, our agency between enforcement and licensing, and that's actually a lot of our staff time, is to review these temporary permits and then more and more happening, whether we should rescind them. And we do realize that that's a very difficult decision for the perma-dee and we tr- we try at all costs to avoid that, but once in a while, it does happen.
Understood. Maybe there's a way to thread that needle. A, a, a separate unrelated question, and I know you've understandably pointed out a number of times that you can't comment on pending legislation. So, maybe I'm gonna try and phrase this, I, a little creatively to try and elicit an answer. Um, so, the commission's recommendations, those are recommendations. The SLA, your predecessor participated, in fact, led the, the commission. I, I, I think it's, it's reasonable for, for someone, including us as policymakers, to look at those recommendations. The SLA chair at the time led the commission. The SLA very significantly participated in, in those conversations and the background that led to those conversations. I, I think it's reasonable for someone to take away from that that, at least the prior administration at the SLA, supported those recommendations that came out of the commission. So, my question is, I, do you and/or does the SLA still support those 18 recommendations that came out of the commission?
Sir, I work for the governor, so if the governor supports it, I support it.
Fair enough. That, thank you. I tried.
So, Commissioner, again, I want to thank you for being here. Um, I said, uh, members have been asking questions about SLA since, uh, since, for at least the last three years to try to get this opportunity for you to come to us and, and speak to us and give us an update. It's very much appreciated. So, I just want to ask you, um, is there anything that we missed that you wanted to talk about and share with us today?
No, I'm, I'm really grateful for the time that you've given us. I do understand that you have a lot of different areas of law that you have to know and I really appreciate your brain power and I look forward to working together in the future.
Um, I, I hope that we do have the brain power to continue to do it in collaboration and, and in a positive way. I hope that, um, you know, we can, um, feel comfortable. You can feel comfortable with reaching out to us with any concerns and issues that you have. Um, we will do our best to try to help you improve the agency, uh, so that we can make it a happy place for people to attend. As much as, uh, people are, are excited about dealing with bureaucracy, we at least want to make it, uh, transparent and accessible so that we can, um, you know, make our state more business-friendly. Um, you know, and, and I, again, I want to thank you for coming. I look forward to continuing to work with your office as we try to help small businesses improve their ability to get started and to survive. So, thank you for being here and thank your team.
Thank you very much.
Um, we'll now get the next panel, um, the New York State Distillers Guild. Uh, Brian, Brian Forget, president and head distiller for Do Good Spirits and the New York Cider Association, Scott Ramsey. Uh, we're gonna take a five-minute break and let me say a proper goodbye to the commission.
Okay, you can go ahead. I'm sorry. You gonna start?
Brian's gonna start, okay. Good morning, Senator. Uh, my name is Brian Fokke and I'm the, um, president of the New York State Distillers Guild, uh, which is an organization that represents the 160 distilled spirits licensees in New York State, uh, as well as the, uh, president and actual distiller over at Do Good Spirits in Roscoe, New York. So, um, Roscoe, New York, up in the Catskills. I appreciate you letting us, uh, come today to speak. Um, we have, um, I keep hearing in the conversation about New York being open for business. I'd like to say, uh, as far as our industry over the last 15 years, uh, 15, 16 years since our licenses became, uh, reduced to allow for New York State distillers, the industry has grown. Um, we've creating, according to a John Dunham Economic Impact Study, we generate about $3.2 billion in economic impact, over $1 billion in taxes. We create new jobs, we protect agriculture, you know, millions of bushels of grain. Um, our industry impacts so many things as well as tourism and small-town development. Uh, we're very proud of it and we've, we've appreciated the support New York State has. Um, as far as our industry, um, the New York State Liquor Authority and how it applies, I know you were asking, um, throughout the testimony of Commissioner Fan, uh, what they're doing to be open for business to help. Our industry actually has always had a very good relationship with the State Liquor Authority. Um, because we were brand-new to many of the people that work there today, they had to figure out what we were. We weren't around in 1933 when the three-tier system was created. New York State didn't have manufacturers, we had a two-tier system largely. So, every time wine comes in, cider, spirits, beer, everything has to be created. So, there's always been a willingness to go through and say, okay, there's laws been created, how do we make this work? Um, in the new administration with Commissioner Fan, I will say that, that we took it to a different level. The communication is proactive, they're reaching out. We've always had, you know, I can't say enough that we've always had a good relationship, but the attitude always was, no, uh, you can't do it, law is the law, you can't change things, this is how it was. The new approach is, let's look at it. If there was an advisory that's negatively impacting your businesses, let us know why. Let's look at it and have a logical, practical conversation about it. And that's what I will say that, that we're experiencing right now. Um, our industry's a little different, we're federally licensed, we're not state-licensed. Well, we're state-licensed as well. So we go through a much longer, a much more severe federal and state licensing. What is holding us back in New York State is the system itself. The system itself was not created for us. We were not around, nor are we multi-billion dollar companies. We're not, well, most of us aren't even multimillion dollar companies. We're doing this for small businesses that take our financial, personal financials into account. And we put everything for this idea of hope. Hope is a powerful thing. But when you realize in an industry that there's restricted market access, that we cannot reach our consumers. Now, when I say that, there's the retail associations and the retailers. We love them. We love retailers. They are the fabric of which this industry gets product safely to consumers. But we're too small to compete. We don't have the finances for massive marketing campaigns. We can't tap into publicly traded funds to go and expand. We're basically driving this stuff largely in our own cars to retailers who are willing to give us a chance and we thank them. As far as market access is concerned, you know, what we're looking at from our standpoint, we look to the wine industry as a way forward. In the 1970s, 80s, 90s, and up into 2005, when they improved direct-to-consumer shipping, they created legal frameworks, almost a system within the system, to allow manufacturers to reach consumers. But yet every time one of our associations applies for a new law, which is nothing more than asking for parity for what wine had, what was proven work, we somehow get pushed down, that our needs don't matter. And right now, what you're actually experiencing in New York State is we are failing. The distillers have been failing. I've been saying that for two years, two, three years since COVID. We're going out of business. Even since a month ago, we had our meetings in Albany. We had four other distilleries tell us they're going out of business. One of them, one of them being very close to me personally. We are struggling financially to reach markets. We're struggling financially to lead the state. You know, alcohol is a multi-state thing. We're only focusing on New York and we can't reach the shelves here. We are asking for our legislators to start looking at the laws. Look to the past. Apply what works because alcohol is alcohol. It is nothing different. Cider, spirits, beer and wine all start with New York agriculture. So why aren't we promoting it the same and giving us all the same rights and benefits? Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Yeah.
Thank you to these Senate committees for this opportunity to testify on these very significant issues. I'm Scott Ramsey and I'm the executive director for the New York Cider Association. And we are the singular trade association in New York State focused on cultivating what is universally become known as the world-class New York hard cider industry. The New York Cider Association represents small and large farms, growers, producers, manufacturers and entrepreneurs across the state, many of whom produce hard cider from 100% New York State apples. And when the association was founded in 2015, there were only a handful of cideries in the state. But I am proud to tell you that we now support over 125 licensed hard cider producers across New York, which is a remarkable industry growth rate of over 2,400% in just the past 10 years. We also now represent a total economic impact to the state of $1.7 billion. So recently, our Government Affairs Committee and I had a very encouraging meeting with the newly appointed Commissioner Fan and her team. We've also been encouraged by Governor Hochul's inclusion of certain updates to the temporary wine, beer and cider permit that are included in her budget for 2024. However, the New York cider industry and all it brings to the state's economy continue to be stunted by the inability to allow our small producers to ship directly to their consumers and build their businesses within the context of the 2024 contemporary marketplace. We've understood this to be our biggest channel, our biggest challenge to our industry's growth for years. And we've been fortunate enough to have the robust legislative support for several years, even before the pandemic, of Senator Rachel May and Assemblywoman Patricia Fahy with their direct-to-consumer cider shipping bill. And their bill has been introduced again into the 2024 session. It is expected to pass the Senate yet again, but consistently gets held up in the Assembly Economic Development Committee and has never been elevated to the agenda for a vote on the floor. And of course, we also fully support your bill, Senator Scoofus. Thank you so much. Because all craft beverage producers should have the same economic opportunities to flourish and to represent the best of New York State. So during the pandemic, when the governor's executive orders allowed for the direct shipment of cider via the Drinks-to-Go order, there were no major issues with underage recipients of alcohol or delivery via common carrier as suggested by the retail and distribution industries. Nor did cideries having the privilege of direct shipping negatively affect the bottom line for retailers and distributors. And in fact, the numbers in the commission's report show that distributors did exceedingly well during the same period in which direct shipment was available to craft producers. So without the ability to ship directly to our customers, New York cider producers are faced with an antiquated distribution structure designed for large-scale producers, as Brian mentioned, that can afford to participate in a system that inhibits the potential of small businesses growing their brands, building their customer bases and increasing the economic impact to their communities. In addition, retailers have limited shelf space and distributors can only focus on a limited supplier base. And in addition, the ability for New York cider's farm manufacturers to ship directly to their consumers is in full support of the amendments that were bade back in 2015 to the ABC law, which wanted to support economic growth, job development, the state's alcoholic beverage production-led industries and its tourism-recreation industries, as well as the conservation and enhancement of state agricultural lands. So interestingly, the commission's final vote for recommendation of direct-to-consumer shipping was actually tied eight to eight, indicating that there's a well-developed understanding of the need for this opportunity for New York cider and all craft beverage manufacturers in New York. So what we are seeking is simple, to have parity with and provide for the New York cider industry the same economic opportunity that New York State affords its wine industry. New York is the second-largest apple-producing state in the United States. We have more active cideries than any other state in the country. And we are number one in the U.S. for most apple varieties. So cider is an agricultural product, just like wine. Cider is made with fermented apples. Wine is made with fermented grapes. Even at the federal level, the TTB classifies cider as an apple wine. And yet, New York cider makers don't have the same opportunity that New York winemakers have had for over 30 years in being able to build their businesses, connect directly with their customers and bring tremendous value to the agricultural and agritourism industries of this state. So I thank you so much for your time and appreciate your consideration and support for New York cider's industry and, most importantly, for New York State's growers, farmers and producers. Thank you so much.
Thank you both for your testimony and pointing out that you are not getting parity with the liquor industry. And I want to thank Senator Scoofus for bringing this up every year. And in conference every year, we will try to help work with you with the assembly to find out what the roadblocks are there so that you can finally get parity. It's not fair. Clearly, it's not fair what's going on with you. And I will work with Senator Scoofus to try to lobby our colleagues on the other side of the aisle and to try to get this lock-in resolved. I don't know what else to say other than that. You know, I really appreciate you coming down to the city to air your points of view. You know, congratulations on your perseverance and hope that you will continue to fight for what you truly deserve.
Good. Thank you both for your testimony. And I echo what Senator Comrie just said. One of the things that I think we always try and do as policymakers is to grow the pie, not just to cut the pie into more slices and divvy up someone else's share. My view on direct-to-consumer is that this is an opportunity to grow the pie. Because as was rightly pointed out, especially for our smaller craft distillers and cideries, this is a matter of you all not getting shelf space in the small liquor store in a community. And so you're not displacing alcohol consumption. You know, you're, this is a matter of getting your product to consumers who are not able to get it elsewhere. My question to you is, do you have any kind of sense or have you seen any data from wineries about, that speaks to how much that pie grows? You know, what does your business look like? If it's at X, is it X plus 20% with direct-to-consumer? Is it X plus 5%? Give me a sense of how much growth you see if we were to do DTC.
There's actually a study by Sovo Ship Compliance just released on the wine industry, which we can share. But one of the things that were interesting, and if I'm off by the stat a little bit, out of all the producers of wine that are shipping, majority of them are small. And this is where parallels to distilled spirits in the United States. There are 27, 2,800 distilleries in the United States. 90% of the volume, nearly 90% of that volume is produced by 10% of the people. The rest of the distillers in the United States produce less than 1,000 cases. This is actually parallel to the wine industry. Most of the people that are surviving, or they're surviving due and they're all 5,000 case and under, so small family wineries, they're surviving from this number. So it's a massive amount of taxes are generated, which we can point to that report. But it's not a matter of massive growth for people. It's the idea that they have enough to hang on. They have enough to grow their businesses in a self-contained environment.
I would echo what Brian said. I mean, it is, you know, our focus is so much just on the sustainability of our small businesses. To have this capability just gives them more opportunity to grow their businesses. I think that Sovo probably does have some good, great data around what this could look like if DT was available. The other thing I would highlight is that, you know, we're also, the world's a very, very different place, especially after the pandemic, around consumer behavior and consumer interest and consumer demand. You know, everything has shifted to much more of an online capability and direct-to-home and consumer capability. And we feel confident, we've talked about this before, we feel confident that this would actually help to build opportunity for retailers and distributors because we would be having access to expand our brands and advertise and promote our brands to consumers so that they would create more demand for actual retailers and distributors that there's no way these brands can get on the shelf or in front of a consumer to begin with. So it's a great data point that we should look up.
And one more point on that, sir, is the, when you look at distilleries, wineries, cideries, the reason why wine DTC works is that your wineries are federally licensed. So we have to adhere to the laws of every state. So we cannot ship over a state line unless we're, that state licenses the reciprocal agreements for it. So, you know, unlike many of the other types of shipping that are available, we cannot violate somebody else's law or else we lose the federal license. Something to keep in mind. And that's where the amount of tax generation that is generated across the nation is there because you have federally licensed entities that are adhering to state law in each state they ship to. So it's controlled.
When you've got a distiller or a ciderie that has some amount of product and they can't find shelf space in liquor stores for all of that product, what happens to that product? Is it stashed away in like a back room somewhere? Is it dumped somewhere? Talk to me about what happens when you've got excess product.
I think, I mean, I think my producers are pretty good at, you know, building and producing cider to the extent at which they believe they can sell it. I don't think they're overproducing because they just simply can't afford it. And yeah, that would be my perspective.
Cider would go bad over time, whereas distilled spirits stay good forever. But where you look at that is, it's not, again, not the retailer's fault that there's no market or shelf space. Never their fault. But when we're looking at our stills and the capacity of what we could grow to, we are just sitting idle. I know a lot of distilleries around the state that everybody points to as success stories. Their stills aren't running. They're not actually going through and distilling anything because they have no money because they're sitting on inventory. They have stuff aging that has no marketplace. So you're to the point where you have distilleries that are shutting down, selling off inventory. Because it doesn't go bad, but you need to pay the bills. Without market access and revenue, you can't stay in business. So that's what's happening all over the state. New York whiskey is, you know, people are selling it fire-sale prices at bulk and trading it to other people.
This is common, what you're describing.
Yeah, that's because we're federally licensed. We can sell bulk alcohol to different people. But that's happening all over the place right now. Because there's no market for it, you can only push so far. You got to pay the bills. So you're seeing less production. You know, some people are doing great. Most other people, you know, they're selling what they can out of their taste.
At least on the distiller's side, it sounds like, you know, if direct-to-consumer was an opportunity here in New York State, it wouldn't even so much be, oh, we're now able to produce, you know, five times, 10 times as much product as now. It's really, now we can actually sell all this product that we're, you know, putting on fire sale to other states.
You could sell it, you know. You know, what the potential, the potential is when someone visits New York State as a tourist. They want to go home with a bottle, but they can't, right? They don't want to check it in their bag. They might be carrying on a bag. When they want a second bottle. And for me to go to another state, it's harder to do business in other states than just as hard, if not harder, than it is to do business in New York. So for us, not being able to reach those people that experienced how great New York State products are, if they can't get it, they forget about you. So your brand can't really grow. You're always going to be, I would say that the distilling industry has become almost like a brew pub or a cider pub where we have, I never wanted to flip a hamburger in my life. I wanted to be a manufacturer. But now I'm flipping hamburgers to pay the bills. That's not exactly the best business plan is to, you know, we're doing whatever we can to survive with whatever the state gives us. But that's not a manufacturer. That's a shop clerk and a restaurant piece. So it's a challenge.
As you guys probably know, we amended my DTC bill last year. And one of the primary amendments was, instead of us opening the door to DTC to virtually all manufacturers, we are limiting it to certain class sizes, licensed class sizes of manufacturers to really focus the opportunity on smaller distilleries and cideries. Are you all comfortable with that approach?
Yeah, we're comfortable with it. You know, and ultimately, we would love our retail partners in the state to sit down with us and talk about how else we can work together to make sure that everybody's needs are met in here. But, you know, from our standpoint and our membership, you know, we're not against anybody's shipping. We're just really, we're really just worried about ourselves trying to survive.
Yeah, and the reason why, as you know, we tailored it this way is, you know, I do have more sensitivity to, you know, Jim Beam getting, you know, ships direct to consumers in New York State. Jim Beam is on the shelves in liquor stores. Jim Beam is on the shelves in liquor stores. And so as I said before, that is displacing sales, whereas providing the opportunity to, to smaller outfits that are not on those shelves is not displacing those sales. But it sounds like you're comfortable, or are you comfortable with that?
Absolutely. I mean, our larger producers have access to the current distribution models, and we support those models for those folks. So it's really about, you know, we're, we're so directly tied to agriculture, we're talking about farmers who are essentially growing apples to produce cider, that's the vast majority of our membership. We want opportunity for them to be able to grow their businesses in a meaningful way.
Yeah, very good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Again, thank you gentlemen for coming down to the city to testify and to share with us your plight, and we will do everything we can to try to help you within this session. Hopefully before June, we can see some success for both of you.
Excellent.
Feel free to reach out to our offices and we'll do what we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Wonderful. Thank you both so much.
Thank you. Our next panel is General Business, the Business Council of New York. Mr. Zubor.
Good afternoon, senators. My name is Paul Zubor. I'm the Executive Vice President of the Business Council of New York State. The Business Council of New York State represents over 3,200 business members. And I think from our perspective with the ABC law is kind of interesting because we really kind of have everybody in every bucket in, in the ABC law. And because 70% of our members are small businesses, we not only have some of the larger players within the ABC law, but we have small restaurants, we have, you know, small liquor stores, we have, we have the gamut. So it's kind of provided us a unique perspective. First, let me, let me say to the, to the SLA, I think there's a breath of fresh air at the SLA right now. You know, I've seen administrations from Bataki to Spitzer to Patterson to Cuomo to Hokel, I don't think I left anybody out, and different iterations of the SLA. I think one thing that Commissioner Fan brings to this agency is an understanding of how important customer service is. And I think she's really tried hard to make it easier for people to be able to get licensed, for people to get a response back from the SLA. I know previous administrations, that's, that's been very difficult. But I do think the SLA's hands are tied because they're dealing with outdated laws, laws that were, were made during prohibition. I, I think there's, there's a couple of perfect examples. You know, the provision that you can only own one liquor store. If you go into the bill jacket of, of that provision when it was passed right after prohibition, the sole purpose of it was, there was a belief that having a sickle, single liquor store owner would protect the community. Because that liquor store owner would be in the liquor store, he would know the kids in the neighborhood, he would know who has a drinking problem, he would be kind of like the police for the community. Now, we all know society has changed, things have changed, that doesn't exist anymore. So what do liquor stores do now? If I want to grow my liquor store, well, the only way I really can do it is if I have a wife or a son or, or somebody who with independent money can open up their own liquor store. We can name it sort of the same so the community kind of gets the fact that we're, we're somewhat of a chain. Now, now, there's nothing wrong with doing it, it's, they're doing it within the law, but why should they have to go through that process, right? And it doesn't make sense. Another example of where the law is kind of problematic, and this happened to one of our members. One of our members wanted to open up a shuttered restaurant in New York City. They were all set, they were ready to go, they were about to do it, it was going to create jobs, and lo and behold, they owned a small interest in a winery in California. Well, we're so strict with our tied house laws that we, they couldn't be licensed. So the only option for them was to go to the state legislature, pass legislation, which creates meets and bounds for that particular, particular location. That doesn't make sense because that was not what the law was intended to do. I think, you know, through your infinite wisdom and the governor's infinite wisdom, we, we decided to have a commission to look at the ABC law. I was skeptical, I was a member of the commission. I was quite skeptical because I've seen this show before where we go in and we talk about this, and what comes out is about two changes to the law because every entrenched interest fights and fights each other. You know, retailers own one, wholesalers own one, wholesalers own one, retailers own one, and so on and so forth. But I was, I was quite pleased with the fact that we came out with 18 recommendations. And I think, I, I know Senator Skufus has put in a bill to codify many of those recommendations. I think it's really important that we go down that path and take the first step in changing the ABC law. This is not the only 18 items that need to be changed, but this is the first step. And I think Brian, when he was up here from the Distillers Guild, made a very interesting point. He said, "The law was not created for them." And that's very true because the world changes and we have to move the law as the world changes. I am quite frankly tired of, I was on a radio recently and I had a debate where a, a owner of a liquor store argued to me that, "Well, my family started a liquor store in 1940, and we lived under these laws since 1940, so therefore we can never change the law." That's, I mean, that's crazy. I mean, you know, if you, if someone ever said that to you and said, "Well, you know what, Senator Comer, you can never change a health law because it was created this way and this is how I lived under the health law." You know, you would laugh him out of your office. So I think it's, it's time that we change the law, it's time that we make it easier, we create economic development, we make it easier for the state liquor authority. I mean, I just, I think the fact that we went through this and we got those 18 recommendations is very important that we proceed so we can continue to change the law.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. I don't have any questions for you, I just want to thank you for coming down as well and, and sharing. I hope that we can actually get these changes adopted, that, that Senator Skufus has codified into one bill. I think it's important, I agree with you, that nothing stays static and, you know, we have to be able to be flexible in understanding that the world is constantly changing. And we have to be able to create the opportunity for businesses to improve and be able to access the state as much as possible. So I look forward to working with Senator Skufus, I think I'm on the bill already, you know, and to try to get these, this bill passed and push past the special interest that only want to stay stuck in the past as well. So, you know, I thank you for testifying today, and I look forward to seeing you in Albany as we work to make sure that the other legislators adopt this bill and want to pass it as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Can you talk about how our, I don't know if I'm artfully phrasing this properly, how our sort of per capita number of liquor stores per people here in New York compares to some of our surrounding states, our neighbors?
Yeah, when you look at some of the data that comes from other states, we're actually behind other states when it comes to, you know, liquor stores per capita. So I, I think some of the arguments that have been placed out there that, you know, somehow by tinkering with the law, we're going to suddenly, you know, open up a, a dam, dam is going to break and suddenly everybody's going to be in the streets drinking or something of that nature. It doesn't, it doesn't hold true to the data that comes out of, out of other states. And I think, you know, there are a lot of states that have successfully done some of the things that we simply want to change in, in this, in this, in these laws. And I think, you know, it's pretty easy to see that it has benefited other states where you look at Connecticut, you look at some of the other states that have done some of these things. So, you know, to your point, to your question, yes, you know, when you look at the data, the data shows that New York is behind other states when it comes to that.
And similarly, you know, this has always struck me as unusual. I don't believe there is a system like this in place for any other industry. But as you know, if you want to open up a liquor store in New York, you, you need an approval, you need basically permission from the SLA, from government, in order to open up your business. You know, there's no, I don't think there's any other parallel situation or industry. It's, it's as if, you know, if someone wants to open up a hardware store and they've got to go to the state government, well, let's look at how many other hardware stores there are in the community and what kind of impact are you going to have on them? Are you aware of any other parallel?
No. And I, and I think this is an example of where we have to help Commissioner Fan, because under the law, you have to meet the public convenience and advantage when you apply for a liquor store license. There's no real definition of what public convenience and advantage is. You also have to appear before the board, before the full board in order to be licensed. So there, there's two results out of that. First, it requires you to get an attorney, which quite frankly, why do you need an attorney to actually have to file an application for, for something as simple as a license? Maybe if you get into trouble as, as a licensee, or maybe there's some other things, yes, I think you, you probably should get counsel, but you shouldn't have to go through that process. And because the public convenience and advantage has no definition, what it has done is it's created uneven decisions within the SLA. So you're sitting there wondering why one person's licensed, but the other person's not licensed. And there was actually a situation in Rochester where a gentleman had put his life savings into trying to open a liquor store. He went, did everything he was supposed to do, and suddenly he got before the SLA and they denied him on public convenience and advantage. And, you know, I think the previous chairman was a little rough on him during that, during that, that hearing. And luckily, he, he didn't want to take it. He was one of those guys who said, "I'm not going to take it anymore." And he went to the press, and he ended up being able to reapply and get his license. But again, we shouldn't have to go through that process. There's a process with bars and restaurants, which should be applicable, applicable to liquor stores. Good cause for disapproval. But yes, there's, I don't know anywhere else in the law where we go through these hoops, particularly with one sector of the industry. And I think by changing that, I think you're also helping the state liquor authority. And also, you're helping the backlog because what's going to happen is you're not going to have as many hearings with hundreds and hundreds of different people seeking liquor store licenses. And then suddenly, you were wondering why, you know, the SLA hasn't gotten to other applications.
Thank you. The, I, I'm sure something you hear from your on-premise members a lot is this, this idea that there's almost a sort of a never-ending invention of wholesaler fees. And, you know, you've got delivery fees, you've got storage fees, you've got case-cracking fees. And, you know, when the SLA tries to play whack-a-mole and they're able to put a cap on one of these fees, you know, there's a new fee that, that pops up. Is this something you hear about a lot? Is this something that you think, you know, this issue was not, I, I don't believe it was one of the recommendations out of the commission, you know, putting a lid and addressing these, these distributor fees? But is, is that something that the Business Council feels that we should be taking a look at?
Yeah, absolutely. We should, we should be taking a look at it. But I think what the commission did do, which what we did look at, was whether or not a bar or restaurant could purchase a limited quantity of alcohol from a liquor store. Because many of us know what happens is, you know, it's a busy Saturday night and suddenly you run out of Tito's vodka, you need to get Tito's vodka. So what the store owner has to, or the bar owner has to do is, he has to look at his bar back and say, "Here's $100, go down to the liquor store, give me a case of Tito's." And right then, he's in violation of the law. And it doesn't make sense because, you know, in defense of, of the wholesalers, they're not going to load a truck up and bring a case of vodka to a bar that, that might need it. So this was like a simple thing that we did with the, with the commission, a simple change, a change that made sense. You know, I just want to say, like, you know, every recommendation that was, or proposal that was before the commission wasn't approved. There were some things that I thought should be approved that weren't approved. But what's frustrating is, you know, when people say they're going to take their marbles and go home because they don't like the outcome of a commission that they've been appointed to, that's kind of mind-bending for me, all right? We all, we all stood up there, we all had our, our, just our opportunity to talk. Each one of us was either represented the governor, the majority leader, the speaker, the two minority leaders, there was a broad group of, of people. And again, if we pass these 18 recommendations, I know we've done, done two, I believe, I think we roll towards making more changes to the ABC law. It shouldn't, there shouldn't be a, a law that kind of is stagnant, it should be a law that kind of grows as society changes. You know, I never thought there would be a day where I would go on an app, order something from a liquor store, pull my car up to a parking lot and open my trunk, and then there's someone who puts the liquor in my car and I drive away. I never thought there would be an app where I could actually not even have to leave my house and have, have, have liquor delivered to me. So the world is changing, and so I think, you know, unless we decide to move the law in regards to how society has changed, how businesses changed, you know, we're going to continue to tie the SLA's hands behind our back.
Can you share your thoughts on the 200 and 500-foot rules?
Um, yeah, you know, I think, I think, you know, there's a way to honestly get this done and make everybody comfortable. I know that some folks in the city have, have some concerns, but, you know, I, I'll use the, you know, I've had this happen even before I was with the Business Council, when I was in the private sector, where, you know, a hotel opens up and all of a sudden they have a restaurant, and oops, they didn't know they were within 200 feet of a church. So they go to the church and the church says, "Oh, we have no problem with you serving alcohol." And then they go to the SLA and the SLA is like, "Sorry, you know, our hands are tied." You know, again, there has to be some flexibility in the law, some, you know, it, I, we have to remember that when the law was first written, there was a strong concern in New York State that, you know, we're coming off of prohibition. So what did we see, you know, during that time? We saw a large influence of, you know, mob activity taking over the liquor industry. You know, there was always the ongoing concern that once you kind of ended prohibition, people would be out on the street just drinking all day long. So, you know, you created these laws to kind of protect the consumer and protect, you know, the community. And, you know, that was 19, the 1930s, so now we're in 2024, so now we have to start looking at, at things and making the changes to the law that make sense.
Yep, thank you. And just final question, is there a particular issue or reform that the commission did not contemplate that you think is, okay, if we did all these 18, like, but this is one more that we really should do?
In, in terms of being approved or being?
Either, either it wasn't approved or it wasn't brought up for conversation.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, Brian was up here talking about direct-to-consumer. You know, I'll probably get in trouble with some people for saying this, but, you know, at the end of the day, look, let's be, let's be honest, as a, as a consumer, I'm not going to go to the internet and order Tito's vodka online and pay shipping and handling fees for Tito's vodka. So I'm not going to do it. So, because the liquor store's down the street. So who's really using direct-to-consumer? It's really someone who wants, "Oh my God, there's a small batch that I want," that, you know, they only make 1,000 bottles, and the wholesaler's not going to deliver a small batch.
But they went on a vacation to the Finger Lakes.
They went on a vacation to the Finger Lakes.
Some distillery they visited and they loved to get like a bottle.
Yeah, and you know, I remember the debate during direct shipment for wine, and, and I was on the other side of it for, for a while, much to go into my former boss Allison Lee, but that's another story entirely. But I was on the other side of it, and I remember the arguments about the fact that, you know, if we do this, it was going to end civilization, everybody was going to like, you know, liquor stores were going to close, and it, it was much ado about nothing, right? And I think that, you know, we have to be realistic and honest about some of these things. You know, I get the position, you know, I have a constituency, everybody has a constituency, and I get the position by some that, you know, they're worried about, you know, their position in the industry. But, you know, certain things make sense, and I go back to, again, what Brian said, you know, the law was not created for them, right? Because they weren't contemplated when we, when we wrote these laws. So again, we have to, we have to kind of move with the times and, and modernize the law.
Thank you.
Did you have a question?
I do. All right. Well, hi, Paul. I apologize for missing your testimony. Thanks for providing a written copy. I was actually testifying at the MTA board, so I had to step out. Thank you. But I appreciate you being here today. You know, I feel like businesses, and we see the headlines everywhere, are very concerned about retail theft as of late. And so, for example, and I apologize because I don't have New York numbers, I have national numbers on me, but larceny right now is around $5.3 billion, burglary $4.1 billion. And then there's wage theft. Minimum wage violations in the United States are at $23.2 billion, overtime violations are at $8.8 billion, rest break violations are at $4 billion, and off-the-clock violations are at $3.2 billion. And I guess what I'm getting, trying to get at here is in understanding how it is that the Business Council can be supportive of, you know, leveling the playing field for businesses that do the right thing by actually addressing the elephant in the room and the bigger problem, which is wage theft.
Well, I don't, I don't think at any point we would support wage theft. I mean, obviously, if someone's a bad actor.
What is the Business Council currently doing to combat wage theft?
What are we currently doing to combat wage theft? You know, I'll be honest with you, I don't necessarily know if I have any members that are participating in wage theft. So I, I, I think that, you know, I understand your, I understand your point, I don't disagree with the, the conversation that you had with the commissioner about, you know, making sure that someone who is applying for an application, who has, you know, something in her file that should be in her file from the Department of Labor that shows that they're a bad actor and that they have stolen wages, I mean, without question, I, I don't think any-
So would that be the Business Council's position? Is the Business Council's position that we should not be rewarding liquor license renewals to restaurants that are engaging in wage theft?
Yeah, I would, I would, I would say that I would, I would support that, that position. I know there's some bills out there and I have yet to comment on them, but again, I'm not, I'm not here to, and I don't think the Business Council's here to all of a sudden say or excuse somebody who has clearly violated the law and DOL has clearly flagged them as, as violating the law. I think that, you know, to the commissioner's point, there's a couple of things. We have to make sure that occurs. We also have to make sure that the system of talking between the agencies is a little stronger because obviously, you know, not, the agencies aren't always talking to, to each other. And, you know, the SLA, when they open up a, a file, they can only go by what's in the file, right? So, I mean, I know that they have the same problem sometimes with, you know, issues where people scream at them and say, "Well, why didn't you shut down this bar? This bar was, you know, a bad actor and they're causing all the problems." But when they go into file, the police haven't actually given them any, anything to go on, right? So I do agree that there are two things, that we should not be awarding bad actors, and I think that we have to figure out a way to make sure that the agencies communicate in a better way so everybody knows what the person before them has done or has not done.
All right, thank you.
Again, thank you, Paul, for being here and for your point of view. I want to thank you for your comments on the 200-foot rule and the, and the issue with churches. I don't understand why SLA is turning down letters from churches if they, do you understand why they're turning down letters from churches that say it's okay?
Sir, I'm sorry, turn down?
You know, if a church is saying it's okay for a business to operate because they don't have a problem with them having a liquor license, why is the SLA still turning down those applications?
Oh, turn down the application within, within, with, if they're within the vicinity of a church?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I think they're stuck with the, with the provisions of, or the statute, right? Because you can't, and I've had, I've had several occasions in, you know, prior durations of my career where I've literally been able to get letters from churches who say that, like I said before, that we have no problem with this entity opening, but the SLA is some, somehow, is somewhat, their hands are tied by, you know, the statutes that they have to follow. And I think, again, going back, that's why it was so important that we kind of moved forward with these 18 recommendations, because I think we can start moving forward and start going through the law and looking at the law, and to your point, Senator- And to your point, Senator Scoofus, there's other things that I'm probably not thinking of right now that that needed to be changed, because we were very limited in what we we could discuss there, and a lot of it had to do with, was very specific in the statute. But there's a lot of other things that we we need to go through. So I I agree that the 200 foot rule is, it's similar to the Tidehouse law. It's it's very draconian in how it's interpreted, and I think it needs to be interpreted with more flexibility.
Thank you. I appreciate you on commenting on that. So it's a frustration for a lot of folk that they can't get their license even though they've gotten permission from the church, that then the SLA still takes them through another eight month process to try to clear that up. It's just another reason why new businesses are frustrated with trying to get online.
And and we're frustrated too, because, as you know, there's a lot of small businesses out there that they're the ones hiring people within the community. But again, you know, I I go back, the last thing I will say is, I go back to Commissioner Fan and her her team, I've, it's a breath of fresh air. You know, one of our members is an African American chamber that came to us and said, oh, my God, we have a, we have a member within our chamber that can't get a get a license. And it was a simple thing that the lawyer didn't know that they could get a temporary permit. I mean, I I could not ask for a better, you know, customer service from the SLA to making sure that that restaurant was able to open with a liquor license. So, you know, it it's, they're, they're doing what they can do under the law.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. Thank you for coming. Now we'll have our next panel, which will be consistent of on premise licenses issue, Empire State Restaurant and Tavern Association, Scott Wexler, the Near State Restaurant Association, Kevin Dugan, the Near State Latino Restaurant and Bar and Lounge Association, Sandra Jacquez, and Andrew Riji from the New York Hospitality Alliance.
Need a longer table.
Yeah, right.
Kevin and I should get more exercise.
Congestion pricing is coming soon.
Who, Scott? All right, ladies first, okay. And gentlemen, there you go, ladies first, all right. Sandra, go right ahead, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Comrie and Scoofus and Senator Ramos and all the members of the committee here today. Thank you for having this important hearing on the state liquor authority and alcohol beverage control law reforms. I'm glad to be here to share comments on the promising reforms and steps the SLA can take to bring these processes into the 21st century and provide a better SLA experience for restaurants and nightlife venues. I am Sandra Jacquez, the president of New York State's Latino Restaurant Bar and Lounge Association, which is a nonprofit organization representing, thank you, the interest of hundreds of Hispanic minorities and immigrant owned restaurants and nightlife venues throughout the city of New York. In addition to my role as president of the association, I'm also an entrepreneur and restaurant owner in Inwood. During my decades of experience in the hospitality industry, I've seen firsthand how outdated laws can hinder the growth of small businesses and create many challenges. The current ABC laws are restrictive for new and existing business owners and limit their ability to adapt to evolving consumer preferences, changing neighborhoods, and growth opportunities. The proposed reforms to the SLA and ABC laws offer a chance to uplift New Yorkers, bars and nightlife establishment, and remove the prohibition era policies currently in place. The association has worked with industry partners to advocate for their recommendations that came out of the commission to study reforms of the ABC laws last year. These recommendations are reasonable and practical and would present a transformative opportunity for business owners to thrive in a more dynamic and supportive regulatory environment. The association supports the recommendations made by the commission as well as those made by governors, I'm sorry, those made by the governor, including allowing our restaurants to buy directly from liquor retailers, which should ease the hardship of small businesses that face in the purchasey their liquors. Amending the 200 and 500 foot law, an important step in fostering new businesses, especially those in densely populated and mixed use neighborhoods. Expanding the eligibility for temporary liquor licenses, which would ease the difficulties faced by restaurants and nightlife venues by removing the two-year active license burden. I also want to point out three critical proposals currently in the governor's budget for which we are urging the legislator to keep hold when they present their one's house bills. The dedicated resources to eliminating the backlog of the state liquor authority and speeding up the permitting, the permitting timeline, which will especially help new restaurant and bars during their startups. Also allowing the sale of alcohol in outdoor dining structures situated across the bike lane, a critical component to the success of the outdoor dining program, which allowed businesses to continue and operate conducted during the pandemic. And finally, making permanent the Drinks to Go program, an important addition in the Dirty Day Amendment. All of these changes would allow businesses to provide greater services to their customers while also fostering new businesses and jobs. Our hospitality businesses should be given the tools to succeed. Updating the ABC laws and streamlining the SLA process will help do just that for our hospitality industry, a key part of New York City's cultural fabric. We hope the state legislator will support the commission's recommendation as well as the governor's proposal. Thank you for the opportunity for speaking today. Thank you.
Thank you, Senators. My name is Andrew Riji. I am the executive director of the New York City Hospitality Alliance. We are a not-for-profit association that represents restaurants, bars, and nightclubs across the five boroughs, and the hospitality on this panel with all the water pouring is wonderful. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. Submitted two memos, and after this meeting, or the hearing, I should say, I'll submit some more written comments, but wanted to touch on four important points, and I just added a fifth to the list. First one, temporary liquor permits. We want to thank all of you, particularly sponsor Ramos, Senator Ramos, on the initial bill allowing temporary liquor permits to be issued in the city of New York. There is now a new bill sponsored by the senator that would expand the eligibility to receive a temporary liquor permit in New York City, which is essential. When this bill was initially enacted, it was in a COVID mindset, and there was one provision that said to get a temporary liquor license, the premises had to have been licensed within the past two years. So during the pandemic, it made sense. Tons of places closed at the beginning, and there were lots of vacant restaurants and bar spaces open we wanted to fill up. But now, more than, or I should say, almost four years since that shutdown, I can't believe it, we have places that are still vacant from the early days of the pandemic that are not eligible for a temporary liquor permit, and we have the absurd examples, places like Moynihan Train Hall, that was a new construction, and they have great restaurants. I was just headed up to Albany and there and looking and said, I can't believe these places were not eligible for a temporary liquor permit, and other new constructions or conversions not eligible. So you have folks now waiting up to a year to put people to work, to get a liquor, you know, get their liquor license. We need to get it passed ASAP. That's a way you can put people to job, to work faster, you can open up new small businesses faster, it just makes sense. So we urge, you know, the state to enact that. The second one, which Sandra mentioned, is your colleague, Senator Prasad, has the bill. It's also in the governor's proposal that would clarify what was clearly an oversight when you all passed the bill several years ago to allow alcohol to be served in non-continuous spaces, essentially the roadway dining structures. Who would have known that if it was on the other side of a bike lane in the transportation law, that area, the bike lane, is considered a thoroughfare, and I guess you can't serve alcohol on the other side of it? Everyone thought because the policy allowed alcohol to be served, or I should say, roadway dining structures to be created on the other side of a bike lane, that you were going to be able to serve alcohol there. So right now, this month, the city of New York is opening up the applications for the permanent outdoor dining program, which includes roadway dining and includes roadway dining on the opposite side of a bike lane. If this bill does not pass, then you could have a situation potentially, based on your interpretation, where at least hundreds of restaurants that are now applying going to go through a multi-month process to get their roadway dining, spend tens of thousands of dollars on purchasing the new roadway structures, taking their old ones down, being told, nope, it's essentially unusable because you can't serve alcohol there. I mean, it would be a disaster. And when, I think Senator Comrie said earlier, wanting the state of New York to be more business friendly, because it's not only about the day-to-day operations and regulations, but that overall perception and how our small business owners feel about doing business here, this is something that would just strike them in a devastating way. They went through the time, lose the money, lose the jobs, and, you know, really harm that narrative and make it more of an unfriendly business place. The third, which is making drinks to go or cocktails to go permanent in the governor's proposed budget, we are supportive of that. You know, you could always do, or for a long time, could do beer and cider, you know, extending this to making cocktails to go permanent is helpful. Small businesses, they need all the help they can get. It's great for customers. Why shouldn't I be able to get a, you know, bourbon with my burger delivered, but I can get a burger and a beer? I mean, it really makes no sense in today's world. Fourth, I was also one of the appointees to the commission to study reform of the alcohol beverage beverage control laws. We're very supportive of those recommendations impacting our industry, restaurants and bars. They all essentially pass unanimously or near unanimous, particularly the 200 foot law. That's something, we have many members in Harlem where you are unable to get a liquor license within 200 feet of a, you know, place of worship or a school, makes no sense at all. There have been bills in the past, we need to get rid of it, especially smaller business owners, they can't go through the whole process for their specific location. 500 foot law, that's another thing. If you want to do something easy that could really help, you could just remove the restaurant category from the 500 foot law. That way, and especially for those applicants that have gotten passed and got a favorable resolution from the community board, they're not controversial, that would speed up the process by a couple of months. And obviously, there's some other things in there as well. And the fifth one, quickly, as my time runs down, I just want to address Senator Ramos's question to some of the other panels about the wage theft. We've had ongoing conversations about this. I know how much you care about the issue. It's important. We support it. We support doing whatever we can do to stop wage theft. You know, I say it over and over again, whatever it is, it must have due process for the business owner, just like we need to protect workers, we also need to protect the business owner. So if there is a bill that provides our constitutional due process rights in this for small business owners, then we're happy to look at ways that we can help. And I also offer, coming into your district with our team, we can do a labor law, employment law, training seminar for restaurants in your district. We just did one last two weeks. No, I know, but I'm just offering, we've gone into different districts and we do them citywide and get hundreds of business owners, because we want to go after the bad folks, absolutely, but we also have to understand the city, state, and federal labor laws are extraordinarily complex, and so often, you know, technical violations can result in major damages. So as long as we can, you know, figure out a way where there's due process rights, we're happy to do that and work on it with you and anyone else. Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. Good afternoon, Senator Comrie, Senator Scoofus, Senator Ramos. I'm Scott Wexler. I'm here today in my capacity as executive director of the Empire State Restaurant and Tavern Association. I thank you for holding this hearing and for your interest in improving the environment for business. I've submitted a written testimony in the interest of time. I'm not going to read it. I'm confident that you have the comprehension skills to to read the testimony. And I I wanted to start in brief comments by acknowledging SLA Chair Fan and her staff and thank them for their efforts. You've heard of their good work. We share your view of their progress, and we know that they're committed to helping New York businesses for which, you know, we are grateful. I want to associate myself with the remarks made by my colleague Paul Zubert, the previous panel. He covered a number of the topics that that are covered in my testimony as have and will my colleagues here. As we've all pointed out, the ABC law, most of it was written nearly 100 years ago during the prohibition era, and many parts no longer function well, nor do they serve a public purpose. We thank the Senate that is doing their job. Senator Scoofus, you have a bill. Senator Comrie, Senator Ramos have both been supportive of advancing the interests. In fact, many of the issues that we're addressing today are addressed in Senator Scoofus and in your bill, Senate 6785B. We we support it. We've included section by section commentary on the parts of it, but I I did want to highlight one part that's most important Paul talked about a little bit, but Part D authorizes on premise operators, restaurants, bars, taverns, all the folks that the panelists represent, to make limited purchases from liquor stores. And that's the solution that the ABC Commission recommended to address the combination of the exorbitant junk fees that Senator Scoofus, you talked about earlier, and the lack of dependable deliveries by the wholesalers, who, by the way, you should point out, have a monopoly on all the products that they sell. So that is, that is the most important, while we support all of the components of the bill, that's the most important section to our association. We do also support the governor's recent 30 day amendment to make cocktails to go permanent. We agree with, I agree with Sandra and with Andrew in their comments. And then finally, once again, I want to thank the Senate, and we urge you to advance Senator Scoofus's bill during the during the state budget process, engage the governor, and then we will work with you to hopefully engage the assembly to do the things to bring the changes that we all agree are necessary to help your community and help our businesses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Senator Scoofus, Senator Comrie, Senator Ramos. Thank you for convening this hearing today and inviting us to speak. My name is Kevin Dugan. I am the Director of Government Affairs for the New York State Restaurant Association. Suppose this is the the benefit or or maybe the con of going last. I just echo, like to echo most of the points my my colleagues have made up here. One of the common themes, I think, we we've talked about today is is sort of economic development. The restaurant industry can really only reach its full potential with a state liquor authority that is also reaching its full potential. We need to be able to work hand in hand with them. We've talked a lot, yeah, sorry, we could only, the restaurant industry can only thrive if the state liquor authority sort of thrives right alongside with us. To that point, I'd like to commend Commissioner Fan for taking the proactive steps and and the legislature as well as en convening and enforcing them to take a look at the the backlog issue that, you know, still, we still face. That is probably the single most important issue for the restaurant industry in regards to the SLA is turnaround time for for liquor licenses. You have restaurants who, as as Andrew mentioned, who are waiting temporary licenses for for far too long, awaiting full liquor license approvals for far too long, waiting to open, paying rent, having staff waiting to hit go, and and this delaying process is is sort of putting them behind the eight ball before, you know, they're even, they're able, even able to open their doors. So certainly something that we need to take a look at, as well as the cost associated with with liquor license here. I think New York State, I think, is in the top five across the nation of how expensive it is to obtain liquor licenses, and that in combination with sort of the timeline associated with it really does put us at a unfortunate starting position. Again, the ability for for restaurants in situations to purchase from liquor stores, I think, could be great benefit to to our members in the restaurants around the state. You've all have been super supportive of of Drinks to Go during the process. I would like to thank you for that and encourage you folks to to follow the governor's lead on this and the 30 day amendments that she put forth on on legalizing alcohol to go going forward. Would also like the commissioner for the SLA's vocal support on that issue as well. And, yeah, I guess everything else, I think, has sort of been said today. I've submitted testimony. You guys can certainly read further details there, and, you know, considering the makeup of the panel, I guess I'll just leave it at, you know, let's go Mets, and, you know.
You got Mets fans here, that's for sure.
Yeah, Mets fans up here, actually, all three of us.
All three of us, so, well, thank you all for your testimony. Senator Scoofus, you have a question?
I do, but someone else go first.
You want me to go first? I will go first. All right, wonderful. Well, I did have questions about, you know, my temporary liquor license bill, but since you mentioned wage theft, you know, I, let me say for the record that I am very supportive of repealing the 200 foot rule and even the 500 foot rule. I generally am a big believer that if you're a person that requires a lot of peace and don't want to deal with a lot of noise, don't live above a bar, is my. don't want to deal with a lot of noise, don't live above a bar, is my general advice for people. And I do think that the legislature should help in the endeavor to make it easier to sell liquor, beer, and wine in, on outdoor seating areas. That would certainly help our restaurants. I've seen a very low foot traffic, at least in my district, in many restaurants. So I know that our restaurants are still struggling and definitely, you know, we want to encourage especially viewers at home to patronize their small businesses and not the big chain restaurants. That being said, we know wage theft is a big problem in hospitality. I always want my restaurants to have all of the tools to make as much profit as possible, just not off the backs of workers. And unfortunately, that is still very much the case from the smallest restaurant to the biggest chain Applebee's-type restaurants. It's pretty indiscriminate in the way that we see it take place. And this, of course, is millions of dollars that is missing from communities like mine, like Washington Heights, where there are so many particularly Latino workers who are serving both the front and the back of the house. Now, there is, there are due process elements, and we had a wage theft hearing in this very same room last year. There are due process elements in every single of the bills that have been introduced, whether it's the SWEAT bill, what I call SWEAT Light, which is our wage attachment bill, and then now the three new wage theft bills that we have introduced actually account, have cure periods for the entity to be able to repair the damage. Ultimately, again, the biggest problem is, A, when there's a transference of assets, you know, from, from an LLC, from one relative to another, for example, that's what we haven't been able to solve for. And ultimately, even if the wage theft claim is accepted, we, the worker needs to get paid. And I'll, and I'll, and I'll give you as an example, right now, a Colombian restaurant. I'm Colombian, so I want to be fair. La Macarena in Times Square, right now owes workers, mostly Colombian workers, $44,000 in wage theft, okay? And they have promised to come forward and pay the money. I've been told directly that they have the money, but they haven't paid the money. What recourse then do you guys think we should, we should take with these bad actors who are undermining the good players? How can I get Macarena to pay their workers the $45,000, $44,000 that are owed with due process?
This isn't a case of a, you know, a transfer of assets. This is a restaurant that's continuing to operate and not paying the workers, correct?
In this particular case, but I mean, it runs the spectrum, right?
Okay, no, yeah, yeah, sure. I just, I, I don't know. I mean, my understanding, there are legal methods, especially if the business is opening and there are, you know, operating and there are, you know, assets to be had. I obviously can't comment on the specific situation. If they have money to pay, I mean, sometimes it can be, as, you know, bad as this sounds, you know, a business could owe the money and they may just not have the money. But perhaps there are other types of assets, if there's been a judgment filed, that you could go after.
How? How would we be able to go after the judgment?
I mean, I don't know. It's something that a lawyer specializes in this field would have to go. I do know that there are ways to go after it, but specifically to, to the bills. We completely understand the underlying issue. And my point is just, I just want to be very clear that, you know, there's a difference between an accusation and a judicial finding and a judgment. And our concern with these is just that an accusation could result in a lien, or an accusation could result in a liquor license being suspended or revoked, or an accusation could result in a sales tax ID being suspended or revoked. So as long as the legislation is to-
But that's not true. It's not a simple accusation, right? There has to have been a DOL wage theft file claimed. There, there, there has been an entity who has said, yes, wage theft took place here.
So if there is a finding, and again, everything gets very technical, but if there is a finding of guilt and those workers are unable to collect the money they're owed, that's something, generally speaking, we'd be very supportive of trying to find a way to address.
Well, we're out of time, but my big question would be how? And I do think it is incumbent on the industry leaders to be our partners in figuring this out. Because I've been in the Senate for five years trying to figure out the answer. I've held a wage theft hearing and we continue to have these issues. They're actually worse than ever before because every year that the wage, that the minimum wage increases, we see more minimum wage violations. And quite frankly, I'm tired of seeing my people be so poor after working so damn hard. Thank you.
Thanks, Senator. Senator Scoofus, you have a question?
Hi. Thanks to each of you for your testimony. To, to bring this back to ABC law, I'd like to, to really hone in a little bit on the 500 and 200-feet rules. You know, I'm, I'm big into trying to achieve, if it's not a full loaf, 80% of a loaf, 60% of a loaf. And, you know, putting aside my ideal outcome for these two rules that have been in place since about the prohibition era, the B-print of our omnibus bill that was, was just introduced, the bill that was amended, again, looks to try and find something that's achievable and navigate the difficult politics that exists in this space. And so on the 500-foot rule, we look to repeal the rule statewide, except for Manhattan. There, there seems to be hypersensitivity to keeping the rule in place with, with many of my, and our Manhattan colleagues. And they, they feel it's an important tool to, to keep a lid on proliferation. I'd love to, and actually, before I throw it to you, on the 200-foot rule, again, to try and thread this needle, what we are proposing to do is sort of along the lines of what Senator Comrie was describing before, where if the church or school affirmatively sends a message to the SLA, we are fine with this application, then, then the 200-foot rule is waived. As opposed to the current process of if they are fine and the legislature is fine, you've got to introduce a bill that could take six months to pass, then another six months for the governor to sign, and the whole rigmarole that has existed for a long time now. Do those two, I'll call them compromises, work for you all as on-premise stakeholders and, you know, your associations?
I mean, just from like a purist perspective, you know, you can have a beer and wine license within 200 feet of a school or place of worship. So I don't know why, you know, liquor is any different. That being said, you know, in all of your wisdom, if you feel like that is a better compromise, if you have the support of that place of worship or the school for that license within 200 feet, I think in many, many cases, these businesses would, you know, get that. So I think that's something we'd certainly have a conversation and, you know, entertain. And the first part of the 500-foot, I think would certainly have to be part of a larger conversation. We are a five borough-wide organization and I think just often in the city, we often feel like, you know, laws pass and then it impacts a city of a population of a million or more, and it's New York City. We were talking about the temporary liquor permits. I mean, New York City, five borough-wide, had been discriminated against having no temporary licenses. So I think we'd want to make sure that it would be okay. The issue that I mentioned earlier about if you have a support from your community board, you know, reducing the time or not having part of, you know, the 500-foot or the 500-foot hearing could speed things up. So, sorry, I mean, I think generally speaking, both of your points are something definitely worth considering and discussing further and, you know, there could be some tweaks around the edges, but it's all moving in the right direction.
Anyone else?
I was just going to mention, I have a member who even came to me and said, she's right in front of a school. And she said, well, why can't I sell alcohol after school? The school ends at 3:00. You know, that would be, I would be willing to even compromise to that. You know, after 3:00 PM, once the school are closed, can we sell liquor? Because just like Andrew said, she sells wines and beer from 12:00 the whole day. So why can't I sell alcohol? So that's another maybe consideration that we could have a conversation on that after their schools are closed, you know, let them have their, their alcohol.
Good point.
Yeah, I mean, that would be, I think, we, the Restaurant Association would be supportive of those measures. I would also say, you know, this has the potential to significantly increase the time of getting through the backlog. I think the commissioner mentioned before, a lot of the backlog exists because of the violations of the 500-foot rule. Making that process more streamlined, again, just gets to the bigger issue of getting these applications approved and after folks. So that's certainly something that we would be supportive of.
Yeah, thank you. I see my time is ticking down. I'll just ask one final question. You know, it's my, my strong opinion that your members are by and large held over a barrel when dealing with, I, the liquor wholesalers in this state predominantly run almost exclusively by two particular companies. And I wonder if you all can, can provide your thousand-foot view of that treatment and/or what I believe is mistreatment. And not just the fees, the exorbitant fees that I talked about before, but perhaps you can touch on, you know, over the course of a year, what those fees mean and look like for the, an average member. Thousands of dollars, I assume. But not only that, but, you know, certainly in negotiating contracts for products. Can you talk about the mistreatment?
Happy to. Yeah, so, I mean, it affects every aspect of the business for, when you have a liquor license and you're forced to order from, from one of the two major players and, and only, really only one of them will carry the particular brand that you're looking for. So over a barrel, I think, is the appropriate term. You kind of have to pay what that price is, no matter what, especially without the ability, the inability to go to a local liquor store. Again, I know that's one of the proposals that we're certainly supportive of as well. You, you know, you're forced to pay what they set. There's no competition. There's really no much of anything. And also, you know, I think the, our friends from the Distillers Guild were up here earlier. You know, shelf space is obviously an issue in stores. It's also an issue of getting these local manufacturers into local restaurants. There's more hurdles there than you would necessarily expect because of some of the issues we have with our, with our wholesalers. Senator, you made mention of the delivery fees. I know we've talked before about how exorbitant those can get. What once started as a, the SLA agreeing to a $4 gas surcharge back in the early 2000s has now morphed into delivery fees upwards of, you know, $35, $40, $45 per location. And you have these, these operations who are getting maybe multiple liquor deliveries in the same day. You know, at $50 a pop, those certainly add up very quickly and are meaningful dollars to our members. So there's a long list of, of things we can discuss about how, you know, the wholesalers relationship with the restaurant members in the state of New York. And it's certainly something we would welcome more discussion on.
The only thing I'd like to add is that in addition to the wholesalers determining what you'll buy, when they'll deliver it, on what terms and conditions, Senator, to quantify those fees Kevin just, just mentioned, we've surveyed our members and the typical member of our association is buying two mixed cases of liquor each week, one from each of the monopoly wholesalers. Those extra fees are costing them about $10,000 a year. So if they, if, 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 if they didn't have to pay the breaking the case fee or the delivery fee that Sandra is paying and our members are all paying, that would be money they could pay to their employees, invest in their business. And in some cases, the wholesalers will pull their truck up to a, let's say, to a strip mall and deliver to four restaurants and charge them each the delivery fee that we just, that Kevin just talked about.
Truck may not move.
The truck does not move. So it's, it's, it's not just the little bit of fee here and there. It adds up to a substantial cost that comes out of the economy.
$10,000 is a lot of pints of beer.
A lot of pints of beer.
Can I just add one point back to something earlier on the 500-foot rule? Just an interesting, ironic piece of history. So when an old member of the legislator, legislature, I think it was Patavan, had passed the bill, the 500-foot law, afterward, it was to address some specific issues in his neighborhood in Queens where there were problems. Afterwards, he had said that he would have exempted Manhattan because of the concentration if he knew how it would have had these different negative impacts. And he was really trying to address one area. So now we've seen how, you know, something that was trying to address a specific issue in a geographic location ended up impacting us citywide. So like I said, complicated, but love the direction that you're going with so much of this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Question, self-certification, do you think that should come back?
I know it was something that had helped many businesses. So I think, listen, we need options. If, you know, again, you know, the Chair, Chair Fan is working really hard with their team to try to address this. But as long as there's backlog, I think we need to look at all the different ways that we can expedite the process to get people licensed and open and put people to work. So I think everything should be on the table and considered.
I appreciate the, the commitment to try to do everything we can, but when self-certification was instituted, our member said the cost of getting a license just went up by several thousand dollars if, because of having to pay the consultants. The point that Chair Fan made, I think, is the most persuasive one to me. There was no distinguishing improvement in the applications the SLA received by having lawyers self-certify them than having none. I think that the SLA is on the right path. Simplify the application. Senator Comrie is used to just to provide an ombuds person who could help the licensee understand the, the applications. They're written in, in English, but they're not understandable. You have to, you have to live a life of doing a license. So I think we would lean in there before we would create an extra cost to businesses. But I, I must commend you for your diligent effort to want to improve, make it easier and faster for small businesses to get started.
I agree.
Appreciate it.
I just wanted you to go down that path because I really think that if they can get some ombudsman multiple throughout the regions, they would really help. And hopefully, the automation that they're putting in with the computerization would make it easier because I'm concerned, you know, not about the national chains, but the local mom and pops that are trying to get, you know, certified.
Senator, there's an idea that I will follow up with you outside of the hearing. We, the, the state provides an ombuds, an ombuds person to help the craft distillers and the vintners and the brewers. And perhaps they could do that in the regional small business center. So I'll follow up with you and your staff afterwards to see if we can come up with a program that might, that might move forward.
Great. That, that, that may be some legislation we work on together also. So I really appreciate everything that you all are doing in your respective agencies, offices, and groups to try to make the business climate better for everyone. You can count on us to work with you as we try to continue to make that happen. Thank you for coming to testify today. And do you, does anyone have any final thoughts they want to share?
Thank you.
No?
Thanks very much.
Thank you. So thank you, everyone, for being here today. Our joint committee meeting, looking at the SLA, is hereby completed. Thank you, Senator Scoofus.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good day, everyone. Thank you.